Being six o'clock PM on Tuesday, December eighth, 2020, I will call this meeting of the Webster School Committee to order. As a reminder, on March 12th, 2020, Governor Baker issued an executive order modifying certain requirements of the open meeting law to enable public bodies to carry out their responsibilities while adhering to public health recommendations regarding social distancing. The executive order relieves public bodies from the requirement in the open meeting law that meetings be conducted in a public place that's open and physically accessible to the public, provided that the public body makes provisions to ensure public access to the deliberations through adequate alternative means. In this case, we're utilizing Zoom and have listed information for joining the meeting on the school district website. As another reminder, this meeting is being recorded both video and audio and will be posted on the school district website. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the November 24th, 2020 minutes. In a motion to approve them. There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you pull the committee, please?
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Naprata?
Yes.
Member Mallett?
Yes.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
Chair Siddiqui?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Good evening, Dr. Gogan.
Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone's doing well and safe and happy. I will start with a personnel update. I would just like to let you know that we have been looking for long-term floating substitutes at each of our building. I'm pleased to let you know that Brian Riley will be starting as the long-term floating substitute teacher at Webster Middle School, but he won't be starting until January 4th. We do have a number of open positions. I'll give you a brief update. We are still looking for a long-term health teacher at Bartlett High School. Currently, the long-term substitute is filling in for that position. Mrs. Promley has been interviewing for the interim dean position. Some second interviews will be happening this week. We are still looking for a 1-0 ELL teacher over at Webster Middle School. We are in the process of looking for an additional special education teacher over at Park Avenue. The additional tech support person that is also in process and a floating substitute or para Park Ave is also in process, as well as a floating paraprofessional is in process. I have received the retirement letters from Christine Hubert Regalay. She's a grade three teacher over at Park Avenue for retirement at the end of the year. And also the retirement letter from Carol DeMaye, a special education teacher over at Park Ave Elementary School for the end of the year. That's our personnel update tonight. I'll move on to give you a brief update on the hybrid. And I guess I will start with saying that for parents, the hybrid shift has been absolutely wonderful. For students, it's been absolutely great to come back into school. And even for our teachers to see our kids, that piece has been great. But there's another piece I'm going to speak a little bit about tonight. And that is the increased stress that the educators in the building are feeling with the increased cases that we're seeing. And I just want to make you aware of that. Our COVID data dashboard has been going out weekly. I've received lots of thanks for that to keep people informed. This past week, we did have 12 positive cases in our schools with 12 close contacts. When we shifted to hybrid back in November, the daily average of positive cases in Massachusetts was 2,369. Yesterday, December 7th, the daily average of number of cases are 4,342. So I know that everyone is aware that the cases are increasing. I am, we continue to do our very best with following all of our safety guidelines. But the numbers are spiking. With that increased cases, I just want to make it everyone aware that there's increased difficulty with staffing coverage. And we have had to call remote learning days three times over at Webster Middle School. And I guess I want to stress that by the hour, things change. So this is a very stressful time. You know, there's some joy to it, but there's also a level of stress that I'm not sure that people understand unless they're actually living it. So I do want to stress that. My team, I just can't give enough kudos to the team that's working behind the scenes on our school nurses, the Board of Health Director Jen Sullivan, Monique Pranjali, the whole COVID leadership team. We are in constant contact with the Board of Health and constantly communicating and trying to stay in as much as a proactive mode that we can. So Jen, are you on? Jen Sullivan?
I am.
I'd like to introduce everyone to the Board of Health Director in Webster and ask her to speak a little bit about some of the things that we're seeing.
Good evening, everyone. Currently in Webster, our numbers have risen a lot this week. We're over 60 since last Wednesday. Gathering for holidays is obviously a big issue. I do have to say that your team is absolutely amazing. I speak to health directors throughout the state and your team is top-notch. A lot of people just ask me for advice because of the schools and what our relationship is to one another. Your nurses are right on. They're giving the right information with dealing with so many of the positive cases in nursing homes and the assisted living and daycares. I'm not always able to reach out to the students as soon as I find out. So your nurses actually have been doing that for us. And they've given all the right information. They're so knowledgeable and I talked to Ruth Ann and Mo and Kathy multiple times a day and I just, it's, I'm thankful that, you know, they're right on top of things. They're definitely making the hard situation a lot easier. There is concern. I'm sure you guys have heard that the governor has decided to go to phase three, step one. That will affect a lot of things throughout the town, including sport guidance. It's not as unfortunately allowable things as it would be if we were following a different set of guidelines that the athletic director is wanting to follow, which I don't blame him, but I just can't support it this time. But your, again, is big concern right now. You do have a couple clusters in your school and we are watching that completely and going through the protocols with that. And again, please wear your mask, stay safe, keep your distance from everybody.
Thank you, Jen. I just want to inform everyone that as late of, things changed like all the time. So we're doing contact tracing. We're following up on things. Again, I just want to give a shout out to our school nurses. This work that we're doing is really non-stop. So it doesn't stop eight to five. It's all throughout the weekend. Our principals are being contacted. Our custodians are doing their piece in the schools and we're trying very, very hard to stay ahead of it and make sure that people are informed.
I will, excuse me, Ruth Ann, sorry. I, soon as I get addresses in the morning, I contact the nurses 5:30, 6:30 in the morning. So we're making sure that students aren't getting on that bus or arriving to school. We're trying to stop it prior. So everyone's on top of it. It's really, I mean, last night, we're on the phone with each other till 10 o'clock. It's just a non-stop, all-day check-in and evaluate and just make sure all our bases are covered. It's definitely not an eight to five job at this time.
I think we're bringing that up just because we want you to know that we take this pretty seriously. And, you know, Jen had just briefly mentioned, you know, things do change. Today, we were informed that we have two clusters, one at a school and one at central office. And we are working with the Rapid Mobile Response Unit to try to get them to come to Webster to do some testing. So we're trying to stay one step ahead of it. And we have had to close down two classrooms and put them into remote. We have had situations where we, you know, students have been on a bus and we've, you know, had to go through all of the contact tracing. So that's the behind-the-scenes stressors that we're talking about. You know, we continue to do a fantastic job in our schools with safety protocols, cleaning, communication. I really want to give a shout out to our teachers and staff and administrators and custodians. Everyone takes this pretty seriously. But the reality is, from the educator's perspective, there's an increased load of stress on people right now that I just want to make you aware of. And I also want to make you aware of that we are monitoring this. And, and, you know, the safety covering of our classrooms is our priority and things could change. And where we will continue to keep you up to date, the COVID dashboard is in the school committee folder, has been sent to families. We, I've also given the school committee just sort of a tracking record of our cohorts of the students. And we are seeing a shift. There's a slight shift of students from Cohort A, Cohort B, and Cohort C, and more students going for a full remote. Certainly, that's happening. We have also given you a snapshot of staffing. And we continue to do our best to keep parents informed in terms of what we're doing. So I guess I just want to end with my hybrid update to ask for the continued support from the school committee and from the community at large. This is not an easy situation in any way, shape, or form. And there's lots of complex situations that occur every single day. And our safety is our guideline. And I just ask for your continued support. And I'm happy to answer any questions on the hybrid before I shift to the next topic.
Thank you, Dr. Gogan, and also Jennifer Sullivan for framing that for all of us, you know. As somebody who is not living the life of somebody running a school, you know, I think it can be difficult to understand what goes into getting hundreds of kids into a building during the day. And just knowing the amount of time and effort that goes into making sure that things are as safe as they possibly can be is helpful for all of us. I know that it may be frustrating at times for families if a school needs to shift to remote or a classroom needs to shift to remote. But it certainly sounds like everything possible is being done to prevent that from happening. And, you know, this is the hybrid model that I sort of anticipated. I think maybe, maybe some did and some didn't. The idea of getting kids back into school sounded great. And I think it is great. I'm glad that we're all back in school. But it's not as easy as it was last year, that's for sure. So thank you for sharing that behind-the-scenes information.
Okay, I would also like to give you an update on winter sports. Principal Thomas and I attended the Swickle meeting. And that was the superintendents and the principals of Swickle. And I have shared the Swickle letter from the principals. At this point in time, we'd like to hold off making a final decision about winter sports until January 4th, but proceed with signups, knowing that there is a strong likelihood that the winter season could be canceled based on COVID data and safety. As this Sullivan has, I believe she said, I was putting in my earphones that she has shared a letter with you in terms of the winter sports season for the school committee that she's unable to support it at this time. It, I think, I think I'd like to just share with you that as a superintendent, I'm continually being put in these compromised positions where we're being forced to make decisions when the data is kind of backwards. So for example, we're not allowed to have high-contact sports in schools right now. And now we have MIA saying you can do that outside of school. So, you know, we have to think about safety. And right now, with what we're seeing, it would be kind of hypocritical for me to state that that's okay right now. Certainly, I'm hoping the numbers decrease and, you know, we will proceed with making that decision. But there's these different standards and changing metrics that make all of this really hard. Now, I want to just state two things. First of all, it's great seeing the kids back in school. We love the kids and we all want normal back. And we would, we want the kids to play sports. We understand the benefits that they receive from that. But we also have to think about risks and additional risks. So at this point, we're, along with the rest of the Swickle group, going to proceed with signups and, you know, fully letting students and parents know that we will make a decision on January 4th with the Swickle team based on safety. I don't know, Mr. Thomas, did you want to say anything about that?
Yes, as Dr. Gogan mentioned, she and I attended a meeting of the Swickle principals and the superintendents. And this was preceded by a longer meeting with all the athletic directors and the Swickle principals. The athletic directors have been meeting on their own. I know Tony's on this, along with District Two and Three. Committees have been meeting around this. And as Dr. Gogan has said, there's a, I don't want to say a lot of conflicting, but there's a sports medicine committee, there's the MIAA, CDC, a bunch of different people that they've kind of, you know, mixed together to come up with their guidelines for this. And at the meeting, one of the things that I wanted to stress was that in the fall, when we first came to you, it was, it followed a similar meeting where it was decided we were only going to go with cross-country and golf. And that was something that the Swickle principals and athletic directors and everyone agreed with. Three days later, seven of the nine schools said, oh, we changed our mind. We're going to play soccer. So then that left us in a position of saying, how do we say to our kids, like, the other schools can play, but we can't. So I didn't want to, you know, be in that position now where we were telling our kids that we can't play and then all of a sudden, two towns over, they're playing again. So that's why it's kind of a compromise among everybody to push it out to the fourth. Some of the other schools have more than basketball in the winter. They have hockey. Many of their hockey teams are co-op teams. So they're drawing players from multiple communities, which makes contact tracing even harder. So I understand the hesitation of a lot of people. Like Dr. Goen says, in classrooms, we're asking teachers not to go within six feet of students or stay in there within 15 minutes to go help them. But after school, they can rebound and play defense and that. So there's a lot of conflicting advice. But for me, I know that basketball and some of the other activities are what grounds kids in schools. And I think if, if as a league, we decide that we can handle the safety requirements, and I think Mr. Pronto did an excellent job during the soccer season. If we can follow those guidelines in the numbers, Jen has been excellent with us, meeting with us, and I understand her position. But I think if the numbers can support it, that's something that would greatly benefit a lot of our kids. And I would, I would hate to have us not participate if other surrounding schools are. And I believe there are a number of schools that are starting actually on December 14th, which is what the MIAA said we could do. So I think the league took a more reserved stance and asked to push it back. I don't know that we could push it back any further than that because you've got Fall Two that's supposed to start in February. In the February, everything kind of falls together. But I know I spoke with Tony today and he has a potential schedule, a pod that we would be in. Again, that was designed to minimize risk as we did with soccer. So I think everything that we can do, and I know that Tony has spoken to Jen too, and although she can't support, I think she was very complimentary of his plans. So if we can pull this off safely, I think it would be of great benefit. The other thing that I think everyone needs to recognize is, and Mo can tell, can affirm this, when the warm weather, our basketball courts outside are full with kids. Like, kids are going to play basketball. And if it's not with us, they're going to play AAU and they're going to be playing in New Hampshire and Connecticut and Rhode Island and wherever. And we're not going to know where they've been or who they've been with. If we can do this safely, at least we have a good chance of contact tracing and keeping things where we can minimize risk.
So the one thing that we did decide with the Swickle superintendents and the principals is that we were going to be making the decision as a unified group. So if the Swickle principals and the superintendents in the small pod that we do, we will proceed. So we're going to proceed with the signups and look to regroup in January as a group with the Swickle principals and the superintendents. And, you know, Tony has done a great job with safety measures. Each of our athletes this past fall did sign, their parents signed a permission slip acknowledging the additional risks. And that would have to happen as we proceed. So I just want to stress the challenge of the conflicting rules and regulations that we continue to face during this pandemic makes it very hard and no one wants to take anything away from the kids. Again, I just want to stress that.
Through the chair.
Sorry.
We have two folks that would like to speak. Mr. Adamopolis?
We just have two quick questions. The first, without going into specific individuals, did we have any positive cases from any of the fall sports? You know, soccer was, I guess, semi-contact this year. Did we see anything in this town that showed that there was any sort of spread from the sport?
We had some, we had some, some, we had some situations right now off the top of my head without my data sheets in front of me. I don't know if there was a resulting positive, but there was some, there was some watching of some cases. So I can't answer whether that's a complete positive or not without my data in front of me.
Then just my second question. I know that from what I heard that there was less interest from potential athletes in the fall compared to previous years. Has signups started yet for winter sports? And if so, have we seen a decline in the amount of kids that may be playing compared to last year? Or, you know, is it at the same pace?
Signups haven't started yet. Mr. Pronto's on, I think he can speak to the process that he's going to go through.
Madam Chair.
Good evening, Mr. Pronto.
Yes, I can speak on both topics that Mr. Adamopolis reached upon. Our fall season was a tremendous success. We did have kids that may have come down with maybe some cold symptoms, which, when the coaches notified me or the kids notified me, we went right to Mrs. Pepin, in which then we shut the kids down. So we were really proactive with those things, but no positive cases came out with any of our teams or any of our athletes throughout the fall season. We had a couple at the end of the season, a couple soccer players, and they both came back negative after the soccer season concluded.
But they had to quarantine. There were students that did have to quarantine.
Yes. And that was after the season anyway, so there was no more games or practices taking place at that time. Secondly, was, I'm sorry, what was the, I lost my train of thought here.
Trials. The trial process, signing up.
Yeah, the trial process, we haven't done that yet because of all the meetings that we've been taking place with this, you know, getting to the superintendents after our ED meetings and principals. And then the superintendent selected, they came up with a formula. Tomorrow will be the first day of signups, December 9th, and they will be able to find out what the, you know, the interest is. In past, obviously, basketball has been a pretty big sport here in our school. Normally, we have tryouts still too, and we have to make cuts. It's usually one of our bigger venues for sports here at Bartlett High School. But I don't know. We don't know what's going to happen. I know that the fall, there was a drop-off, you know, with the kids electing not to play. But at the same time, the kids elected not to play, but then they played AAU. So I don't understand that aspect of it either. So I'm hoping that, you know, I think everything's scaring kids away, maybe the parents scaring them away a little bit. And understandable. I understand everything that's going on. As Mr. Thomas was talking about is that, you know, AAU is starting to take over. For the first time ever, AAU is going to take place during the winter right now. The AAU people have been dying for this right now because they've been trying to pull kids away from our public school systems. And this is an opportunity for them to do that. So we have kids that have already signed up for AAU. You know, if we have a sports season, we'll be able to hopefully grab our kids back into the public school system because I know they want to play. And that's the biggest thing is they want to play. So I'm hoping that those kids will come back and then we can, you know, grab them on the bona fide team rule that they'd have to play for our school instead of the AAU systems. But there's, like I said, it's, we're going to be behind the eight ball. I understand that the Swickle principals and superintendents have elected to go to January 4th. And as Mr. Thomas stated, that a lot of schools throughout the state are starting next Monday, December 14th. And that's a pushback of two weeks after the Thanksgiving break. So I understand, obviously, our numbers, we're trying to see what our numbers look like. And I'm hoping that we'll be able to have a winter season. It's going to be, it'll be tough. Obviously, I know that, you know, I'm going to mix feelings, obviously. I want to see kids safe. I understand that the aspect of the teachers and the parents saying, how can basketball take place? But if the state has allowed us to do it, and we're going to be one of the few that if we elect not to, it's kind of tough to tell the kids that the whole state of Massachusetts is playing and that we're not going to be able to.
I just want to clarify, that's not what we said. I just want to be crystal clear that we said that we were sticking with the Swickle and the superintendents and the principals have decided we're, you know, we're going to be a unified front. And it wouldn't be as if we would be the only odd man out.
I also want to state that I would have to be approving under the EEA regulations, not the MIAA regulation. So that's where, I mean, I thank you two, Fran and Tony, have been fantastic and definitely are educated and know your safety measures. I just can't approve or agree with something that is not something I need to follow. I have to look at it as a public health aspect.
So through the chair, I guess my question after that statement is, if the Slickle group meets and they agree to move forward with the winter season, but it's through the MIA rules rather than the other set of rules, I guess at this point, would the Board of Health not allow to move forward? And ultimately, who's making the decision whether it's not the schools in? It's just going to be the principal superintendent and the athletic director. It's not going to come back to us for a vote, correct?
It's my understanding, the sports, since we're not in remote, remains, you know, certainly the superintendent's decision in conjunction with the Board of Health and the principal and the athletic director. I want to be crystal clear that we are not going to isolate ourselves as the odd man out. I think the Swickle principals, the athletic directors, and the superintendents have given a lot of time and thought to this. And I think that all they're saying right now is, let's do signups, let's reconvene in January and see where we're at. I will state that Mr. Pronto has done a very thorough job with following the safety guidelines. And I think we, we need to proceed with the Swickle plan and see what happens. And there isn't a day that goes by that I don't speak with the Board of Health Director, I want to say, 10 times. So, and there hasn't been, there's been multiple meetings with the Board of Health Director, the Athletic Director, and the principal. And we will continue to try to collaborate to do the best that we can to move ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Gogan. Are there any other questions or comments from the committee with regard to the winter sports topic?
I would like to say something. This is Jennifer Sullivan. This is Jennifer Sullivan.
Sorry, who? Okay, yes, Mrs. Sullivan.
I just want to reiterate that I am completely open to revisiting this January fourth. I don't want people to think I'm closed minded. I am, I mean, I know Tony's plan is fantastic. I just, right now, I cannot approve it as is. So obviously you're moving it to continue to January fourth. And I'm going to be open at that time to see what the data is.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan.
Through the chair.
Yes, Mrs. Navarada.
So I am wondering if we can get, just get some type of confirmation regarding the process. I know in the summertime, when the guidance came out about fall sports and students who were full remote. Then it went to a school committee vote. So I just would like to get some clarification and I'm not exactly sure how we would go about doing that. Regarding in the winter season. And it sounds like, you know, Dr. Gogan, you're you're definitely on board. If Swickel is moving forward, Bartlett is moving forward and going to participate. However, I'm hearing from Ms. Sullivan that she could say no or not. So is it Department of, or is it Board of Health, or is it the school committee? So I would maybe like to make a motion that we seek to get the answer to the question of who ultimately approves or denies the participation. Again, I know that if Swickel moves forward, we're moving forward, except if the Board of Health says no.
That's my understanding.
So.
I will certainly look into it for you, Mrs. Navarada.
And just with that, knowing that our next school committee meeting is after January fourth. We we may need to have a special meeting to discuss voting on participation.
Yeah, I I certainly we want the school committee to support the superintendent. And I don't believe it's a school committee decision. I I think I've shared with you which way we're going to go tonight, but I will certainly look into that deeper. I I think, again, I just want to stress, we're doing the best that we can with the data that we have. I think there's been a unified front and a purposeful unified front with the Swickel superintendents, athletic directors and principals. To really make this decision as a team. And that's what we, that's what I'm presenting tonight in my update. That's where we stand with sports. We are going to post for signups. I do want to add that if we do participate in any sports like basketball come January. Mr. Pronto and I have been working on the grant funded Real Madrid basketball program for the second language learners. That would be something that would start also with with safety guidelines. Again, I think we have to take one day at a time. And so this is just an update tonight.
Dr. Gogan, and and for your clarification, and at the risk of asking something that's already been asked for further clarification. If Swickel decides that they will be holding winter sports. Are we able to say we will also hold winter sports? Or is it possible for us to say we'd like to hold winter sports and the Board of Health to say, no, you cannot? I think that's the question.
So I will be giving a recommendation. We have been on the same path of supporting one another, making group decisions as the, from the beginning. And I believe that will continue.
Madam Chair, could I make a point of clarification?
Yes, Mr. Thomas.
When Mr. Pronto was was saying, we're the only ones, he wasn't speaking about like Bartlett High being the only one. He was speaking about leagues, the Swickel League being one of the few that we cancel. I know like the Mayflower League has canceled, but the leagues around us, the Hockamuck. Midwack, which is the other big central mass program, they're they're going ahead full bore. Starting December fourteenth. So I know Dr. Gogan has said that we would be unanimous as a Swickel, so I didn't want anyone to think that. It was a question of Dr. Gogan and Tony and myself saying Bartlett High will be the only Swickel school that doesn't do it. He was referring to the league as a whole. If the league as a whole decided not to participate, that we would be one of the few leagues, not the school.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. It also sounds like though Swickel may say, yes, we're going to move forward and Bartlett may not end up participating if the recommendation from the Board of Health is contrary to Swickel, no?
No, I I I think, I I just want everyone to take a deep breath with me. Let's all just take a deep breath. We've got it under control. Please have some trust in me, okay? We are working collaboratively and things will happen in stages. We are moving forward with signups. We will regroup in January fourth. Mr. Pronto is continuing to beef up safety and look at the regs and put things in place. Once we get a decision from Swickel on January fourth, which may even happen before that, we will meet with the Board of Health Director. And I will keep you informed as I always do. So this isn't like, please, let's not add a level, a layer of stress. We're moving in the right direction. I just want to caution everyone that we have to continue to pay attention to numbers. That's all, and look at what's going on. And we've been making decisions and things have been going on. So let's just have some faith and move forward, if I may. I'm sorry, but I just, we're in this together.
Oh, I appreciate your comments, Dr. Gogan. And you know, truthfully, I'm asking because it's my feeling that in any part of life, in the absence of facts. People will make assumptions. And in order to have as much clarity as possible, I would rather the question be asked here in this forum than assumptions to be made outside of this forum. So I appreciate your your helping us understand things a little bit better. We do have faith in you.
Good, just to wrap it up for clarity one more time. We are going to be unified with Swickel. And we will give a final decision on January fourth with what Swickel is doing. We will double check with the Board of Health at that point, and I will keep you informed. And Mr. Pronto's eagerly going to set out tomorrow signups. May I move on?
Can I ask one more question? Completely, does this, um, does this include the middle school? Or is it strictly the high school at this time?
We we have talked a little bit about the middle school. But again, you need middle school kids to play with, so I don't have the exact data on that. So.
Okay.
Nothing's been taken taken off the table completely. Go ahead, Tony.
Yes, I'm glad you, you can see I was jumping out of my seat. So yeah, so to answer Mrs. Blythe's question, we are, when we do sign up tomorrow, we are going to list the middle school kids for basketball signups. So we're waiting on some more guidance. You know, through other schools, if they're going to have middle school sports. But we are going to move forward that we are assuming that we might be able to have middle school sports as well as high school sports. So signups will take place tomorrow for everybody from middle school into high school.
Thank you.
Let me know when you're ready.
I believe we're ready, Dr. Gogan. Thank you so much.
All right. I have a soothing stressful candle burning, you know, to decrease the stress. So I just want to share that with everybody. I have a lot of little updates that I'm going to proceed to give you. I just want to give a public shout out to our first responders in town. The Webster Police EMS, Oxford Police and the State Police. We've had a couple of different emergency situations and they have responded. Johnny on the spot, our school resource officer, I'm giving a shout out to Tim Whiting. Have been there for our schools and our students and our families. So I again want to stress how very lucky we are in the Webster community. And the reason we're lucky is that we stay united. And I'm going to continue to stress how important it is for us to stay united and support each other. I do want to give you an update that you'll probably hear a little bit more about from the principals. But our virtual parent teacher conferences went very well. I I hear a lot from teachers. And I I found this to be quite interesting. Over at the high school, some of the teachers responded to me that the virtual parent teacher conferences, they saw more parents. They had more communication. So it may be something that we may consider for to keep in the future. I I know Mrs. Perangeli is going to give you a much more detailed update on our MSBA design selection meeting that occurred. So I'm not going to go into that detail. All I'm going to say is it was fun and I'll let Mrs. Perangeli share that with you. It is FY twenty-two budget season for us, well underway. Budget goals have been shared with the school committee. You will see a budget calendar tonight. You you don't need to approve it, but you do need to put your eyes on it. Budget individual meetings for FY twenty-two are in process. You will hear some more about that from Mrs. Perangeli, our expert in that field. I do want to let you know it is the holiday season and we are doing everything we can to continue to support our families in need. Our $10,000 grant from Mahfay, the food vouchers have been given out. We are working with the It Starts at Home organization and 60 students will be receiving holiday gifts. We are doing things a little different this year with COVID. We have parent permission to share information and the It Starts at Home organization will drop off presents directly to people's houses as opposed to coming to us. Custodian negotiations are scheduled for December thirteenth. Our professional development grids for December fourth are shared in your folder. They're very comprehensive and very detailed. I would be remiss if I did not thank Mrs. Jill Chapdeline for her hard work on organizing meaningful professional development. We have professional development for our teachers December twenty-first through the twenty-third. And that those PD grids are in process. It's important for you to know that the PD that we have set up for those days is directly aligned to the sustainable improvement grants for Webster Middle School and Bartlett High School. And some of those topics are Park Avenue is going to benefit from as well. Am I going too fast? Okay. As I continue to try to stress, we are working round the clock, trying to stay on top of things, to keep things calm, to keep people safe in our district. As you know, we have been accepted to be part of the Vionox now. Rapid testing in our schools. We are one of 159 public schools that will be receiving rapid testing. I want to give a great big shout out to Nurse Kathy Peppin for her taking a lead on on this. I'm not sure if she's on or not. And if she wants to speak a little.
Hi, I am here.
Okay.
Um, we are in the process. We finished everything we need to do up to this point. I've placed the order. I am hoping we get it by the end of this week. It's not guaranteed, but we are hoping. Once we get our tests, we nurses have to do one more training. Once the training is done, we will be sending out the consent forms to parents. And then once all that is in order, we will be able to test our symptomatic students and staff. If they have mild symptoms, if the test comes back negative, we can send them back to class. There are certain criteria as far as what symptoms are allowed to go back and what's not. Anything with a fever or a significant cough, even if they're negative, they need to go home, quarantine and get a PCR test. But this will help us minimize all these students being sent home and quarantined. If we can test them for the mild symptoms and they're negative, they can go back to class. So this is actually good news.
One thing that I do want to stress is that once we get the test, there will be parent permission forms that will need to be signed. And so we're working on that. There's a third party that's going to be collecting the data of positive or negative tests. So we're in the process of figuring all of that out. And again, I just want to give Nurse Peppin a superhero. Thank you for all her hard work. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Dr. Gogan, if you don't mind me just jumping in here, I also would just like to shout out a big thank you. It looks like we were one of only a hint of eighty communities in the state. That are going to have this capability. So that's a great, a great advantage for Webster. So thank you to all of you that were, I'm getting that here.
We jump on things quickly.
That's clear.
Um, I also just want to let you know that there's been some shifts with the grade eleven MCAS, maybe Mr. Thomas is going to speak a little bit about that. The January test for grade eleven has been postponed. The grade twelve students who need to pass it for will have, be able to participate. So we're waiting for more news on that. And finally, to conclude my report, I want to again let you know that this is indeed a stressful time. It is in all roses and peaches. People are being forced to make difficult decisions. Our teachers are working beyond the capability, their capabilities to try to meet the needs of our students in our schools, our custodians, our staff, our cafeteria. Everyone in our Webster community is going above and beyond, and then above and beyond again. And I am extremely proud to work for this district. But I just want to end with asking everyone to please be kind to each other and to those people who have to make tough decisions. None of this is easy and no one signed up for this. So a shout out to our staff and I wish everyone a happy and healthy holiday. And I ask everyone to really think about their close contacts and what they're doing and how they're maintaining their own safety. Because it does impact everyone. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Gogan. I realize I I don't think I can ever, any of us probably can fully realize the the amount of stress that you're under, your team, and also, you know, the building principals and the the teachers that are coming in every day to to do a job that looks nothing like the job that that they trained for and that they signed on for when they started their careers as well. So, you know, a special thank you to all of you. Mrs. Perangeli, the next item on the agenda is the business manager report. Good evening. You're still muted, Mrs. Perangeli.
You think after about 200 Zooms, I catch on a little bit and unmute, but maybe by the 500 mark, I'll get that. First item on my report is the school building committee update. As Dr. Gogan said, we had quite an exciting morning on December first. I believe I reported to you at our last school committee meeting that we had narrowed down our selection to three. That was Flansburgh Associates, Dorn Whittier and Miller Dyer Spears, MDS. Those three firms, we interviewed on December first. They were charged with giving a 30 minute presentation based on five questions. They talked about that and then we had an opportunity to follow up with questions. The process took about, I want to say, two hours by the time we were done with all presentations. Once we completed looking at all the presentations, we met as a panel. That was the thirteen member panel, three from the district, Dr. Gogan, myself and Mr. Avliss. And then 10 other members from the MSBA and architects and engineers from around the state. From around the state. So during that time, we had conversation about. Which firms we like the best, pros and cons of each firm. We were. Very impressed with. Flansburgh, who came out swinging with a great presentation early on. Dorn Whittier followed up. They gave a bit, their presentation wasn't as powerful maybe as Flansburgh. It was more targeted towards our district because Dorn Whittier has history here in Webster. They were part, they were the middle school architect and they were also Park Ave's architect. So they have a lot of history and understanding of our community. And then we listened to Miller Dyer Spears. Who just missed the mark a bit overall. So during discussion, we talked about what we liked and what we wanted to see. And I believe it was emphasized through all three of us from Webster that. Even though Dorn Whittier maybe didn't have as powerful presentation as Flansburgh. They were the architect that really understood Webster. And it was somebody that we would have liked to have working on our project. I think we've. We've, we trust them. They have not let us down. Their projects have come in on time and under budget. They are true to their word. Even to this day, if we have questions or concerns, we can call them and they're immediately there and will answer any questions we have. Typically, the designer selection panel takes the district's word and listens to them and will lean towards their recommendation. In this case. It. It leaned a little bit more towards Flansburgh. There is a rating system that we rate the architects, three being the top, two being the middle, and then one, that's the bottom pick. Were ranked totals came out. And Flansburgh Associate came out with thirty nine points. Dorn Whittier came out with thirty eight points. And Miller Dyer Spears was, I I don't even think they were in double digits. I think maybe they had eight or ten or something like that. So the panel chose to give us Flansburgh as in, as a choice for architect that we need to go negotiate with. So although we were disappointed. Not having Dorn Whittier. I am one hundred percent certain that Flansburgh is going to be a top notch architect. They were impressive. Their, their presentation was. Quite interesting. It's it, it's really interesting to see how companies are adapting to this kind of surroundings. Everything with Zoom presentations before it used to be an in person presentation. They put up the board and they talk about it and they give a little PowerPoint. Now you're getting into seeing model design, seeing three D sculptures and things coming in and out and how they're manipulating projects to see what your, your building project could look like, your building could look like. They were removing parts of buildings, they were adding, they were changing and just reviewing. They are a well respected. Architect form throughout the state and. Although it's not Dorn Whittier, I am certainly confident that they will come in and give us that energy and do an outstanding job. With us and you know, in hindsight, thinking about it, sometimes fresh eyes coming into a community can see something. That maybe we're not seeing or that we already have in mind that we've been looking at for years. So. Flansburgh is the architect of choice. The OPM that works for us, Ken Gaiet, is negotiating with them to come back, make sure that we can come up with a contract. Once we do that, it'll go to the building committee for their approval and it'll come back to the school committee for your approval. So it was an interesting morning, like Dr. Gogan said, maybe not the way we wanted it, but I'm certainly not. Upset or disappointed in the quality of architect that we received. I think they'll do an outstanding job. Do you think I missed anything, Dr. Gogan? Would you like?
No, well, you didn't, you failed to mention that the the meeting was a four hour Zoom. Which is very long. And 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 as as Mrs. Perangeli has explained, you know, we did stress that we wanted to stay with this, the company that. The architects that have worked in Webster because they know the community and they did dismiss that. But Flansburgh did an outstanding job with their presentation. In terms of what they'll be able to bring to us, they do have an educational consultant that will be working with us that was an educator. I think David Stevens, I believe his name is, will bring some very interesting information to help us as we move forward. To build innovative pathways at our high school. And I I I don't think we could have lost with any one of them. But it was an interesting process, but very lengthy.
Thank you. No questions? Okay, moving on. Next item is the FY twenty one budget. In your packet, you should have received a copy of the budget through December fourth. Everything is looking good. I'll just flip through and point out a couple. I highlighted a couple of things on my end. We are actually looking in really good shape. If you see any deficits, like on page one, you'll see grade one sub. That's because we have a long term sub in there. So they're getting paid out of there. Everything else in the budget, we were seeing cost savings on subs, which is probably not, it's a good thing on one hand because we're not spending money, but it's a bad thing because we're not getting the support that we need to fill into the classroom. So we are seeing a surplus there. Everything is looking good in Park Ave. We're actually seeing some utility savings. We have a lot of credits that we received, net metering credits. For utilities and electricity, so we are saving some money there. If I go into. There's, there's really not too much to point out. I think the one thing that I did want to point out, unless anybody has any specific questions about anything in the budget. Is special education, which is always one of our biggest impact areas. So I don't know if you want to turn to page eighteen of the budget and take a look at that. I think that's the biggest impact area. And I like to focus just on. Tuitions alone because that's one of the biggest areas that hits. So if you notice in that area, we have three tuition lines, the ninety one hundred, the ninety four, the tuition in state collaborative and private tuition. You'll see a sixty eight thousand dollar surplus in one line, a nine thousand. And then a three hundred and fifty four thousand dollar deficit. That deficit that you see is not a true deficit. If you add those three together, it comes up with two hundred and seventy six thousand. The way circuit breaker works is that we have to encumber one hundred percent of the tuition and pay it all out of the LEA. And then they like us to journal that over into circuit breaker at the end. So if you remember correctly, last year we had six hundred and ninety two thousand dollars in FY twenty circuit breaker that we didn't touch, that was carried over to FY twenty one. So we're going to have to apply that, that six hundred and ninety two thousand dollar circuit breaker to our budget. So if you add that with this deficit, we are still looking at about a four hundred thousand dollar surplus in special education. Which sounds about right because we prepaid five hundred thousand out of FY twenty. So we would anticipate to have that surplus in our FY twenty one budget. As you can see, we've dug into that surplus a little bit by about a hundred thousand dollars for some tuitions. We have a couple other possibilities of outplacing tuitions that we're hanging on to. But overall, we are seeing a surplus in special education because of the prepayment of tuition. We knew that coming in, we didn't know what the FY twenty one budget was gonna look like. When we were planning our budget back in February and January, there was a lot of questions about that, whether we were going to be. Working with a deficit from FY twenty budget numbers or level funding. So which is the reason why we had prepaid that tuition. So we are overall in good shape in the budget. I don't know if anybody has any questions on that.
To the chair.
Yes, Mr. Avnopoulos.
One question about a different line item.
Sure.
Fourteen, the, I think it's English, English subs line, it's eight hundred and fifty seven percent are utilized. I know it's not a big number, but I'm just wondering what the, it's fifteen thousand compared to a two thousand dollar budget item was.
Yep, that's a long term sub. So if we have a long term sub and and a department, they go on that line because we don't know who might be a long term at the beginning of the year. But we pay them out of the space appropriately because we have to report them that way in the end of year report.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Oh, I did want to point out too, I'm sorry. If you look at each maintenance line item at each school. So for instance, we can look at Park Ave, page four, that's the easiest. You'll notice in the maintenance, we have a COVID maintenance line. So what that is, is anything that could be applied towards the CARES Act fund. That wasn't set up initially, so we were applying everything to our LEA budget and then we'll journal it over to the CARES Act. So any PPE that we buy, anything that needs to be done, air purifiers or anything like that is being charged to these lines. You'll also see a line like that in the district. What's being charged to the district was technology. So we were able to apply the Zoom license to COVID relief, some of the additional laptops that we had to buy to COVID relief. The web cameras to COVID relief. So all of those things we were purchasing, we had to encumber, we had to send out POs, but we didn't actually have the funds yet. We didn't actually have the account set up yet, but they told us to go ahead and do those things. We were allocated the money, but not actually given the money yet to be able to set up and structure those things. So that's why you see those deficits and we're going to continue to do that. We're going to continue to charge to the LEA and then move over to the appropriate grants. So I want to make that because those are not true deficits there. Any questions? No, okay, great. The next item on my list, oh, transportation update. So. This has been an ongoing conversation that we've been having this year and I've also been speaking with town administrator Doug Willitsen about this. If you remember correctly, last year when we were closed, the state passed a bill. That allowed the payment to transportation companies, even though services were not being provided. The thought behind that legislation was that they were on call because nobody knew when they were coming back. We were all in COVID mode and they were keeping staff and maintaining staff. To be ready to call and have, should we go back to school and when we go back to school. So. Districts around the state were encouraged to make those payments. We made them at reduced rates. We were paying a transportation seventy five percent of the rate of our tuition. So we saw some savings there as a community, as a town. That legislation ended on June thirtieth, twenty twenty. So. This year, we have only been paying for the days we've used. So. Many districts, the first ten days of school typically transportation contracts are a hundred eighty days for the school days. This year that we were, we were reduced by ten days, we only have a hundred and seventy days of school. Our parochial kids went those first ten days, but we did not. So we only paid for two buses for those days. We didn't pay for our nine bus routes. Legislation has just passed and they've extended it. So. You'll see the memo that I put in your box, telling us basically that that legislation was extended. And they're looking for that same benefit this year for days that are not used. They're looking for compensation for the first ten days and they're looking for compensation for the days. That we are not running because many school districts are doing the hybrid model. So we're using buses four days a week, we're not using buses five days a week. So there's a day off that they're not transporting kids. So they are looking for compensation for those days at a reduced rate. I spoke with Doug Willitsen about that to see where he stood on that because. It's it's a little different this time around in that. Last year, everybody decided as a collaborative group. To just approve, approve those payments and to move forward. So we had companies because the concern was that these companies are going to go belly up and they're not, we're not going to have companies to come back to in the fall. Now with everybody back in session, everybody's doing something different. Not, not every school model is the same. Not every school is going two days a week, not every school is home. It's it's all different, so schools are making their own deals kind of behind the scenes. So we had a meeting the other day with all of our local Southern Wester County business managers to try and say. Is, are we coming to a consensus, a group consensus as to what we're going to do? And we all walked away from that meeting saying that it's difficult to come up with a group because every model is different. Everybody has a different need in their district. Everybody's paying something a little different. So. It's my recommendation at this point to hold off and not make those payments. Not saying that we're not going to pay, I'm just saying that right now, things are still changing at the federal level. With loans and extending. The PPE, the payroll protection programs. And if the transportation company, we don't want double dipping is what we don't want. We don't want them taking a loan and then us making payments. So it's either one or the other. If the school districts are going to collaborate and make payments, then he shouldn't be pulling from federal government and we don't want any double dipping. We made sure of that in the spring when districts are making their payments. His employees did not go on unemployment, he continued to pay his employees because he received that payroll protection loan. So I think right now it would benefit us to hold off another month just to see, or at least through the end of the month, see if they come to any consensus at the federal level. Of aid they're going to give companies and then we can see if the transportation company is gonna take any of those benefits moving forward. But they are, it, it is getting increasingly diff- difficult. To find drivers and to fill runs. I will tell you that I had another contract sent to me from another provider who just does special ed runs for us. AA does the majority of our special ed runs and they do our regular education runs. But for those odd runs that come in and AA doesn't have enough drivers to fill those runs, we go out. Those companies are now not even offering to do those runs unless we sign a contract. They want guarantee that we're going to pay them a percentage. Of that run even in days that we're not there. So I've kind of not signed those either. I'm holding off to say what's the status with those runs. Because I feel like, you know, if I don't sign, they're not going to drive and then we're not going to have transportation for our kids. I, I, it's just. I'm not sure how I'm feeling about that. So. But that, that company didn't just, is not just doing that to us. They are charging the same blanket fee to every district across the state. So. You know, I feel like if I sign something for this company to do that, then I owe the same benefit to AA Transportation. Who is always willing to work with us and will go above and beyond. For anything that we need in our district, they do our, they do their best to service us and they're not giving us ultimatums. But he wants to start having that discussion with us about, are we willing to compensate those days? And I just don't feel at this point, I want to give him an answer, a yes, without knowing what other benefits they're going to be receiving, maybe in a few weeks. So I don't know if the school committee has any opinion on that. Mr. Willitsen was. Following my thought process on this and he was understanding and willing to wait. I don't think we're in any crunch to make a decision on that. following my thought process on this and he was understanding and willing to wait. I don't think we're in any crunch to make a decision on that. I just don't know if the school committee had any thoughts on that.
Well, Mrs. Prangely, this sounds like another situation, first of all, uncharted territory, right? And another situation where there are no good options. There are no options that feel like the obvious right answer.
I agree. It's difficult because it's difficult because there, you know, many times during these contracts, we're setting specifications, you know, you need to have buses on hand that are maybe two thousand fifteen and newer. You need to do X, Y, and Z. And they have staff, they're paying for leases on buses, they're paying for their staff. And, you know, they entered into these agreements anticipating this revenue from these contracts. And now all of a sudden, you know, the, from, you went from a hundred eighty-day contract to maybe having a hundred fifty days that you're driving kids to school. So you're, it, it's a big cost reduction there for them. So I, I understand when they're coming. You know, Ron Ernemeyer is a, you know, he runs a great ship over at AA and he, he's very easy to communicate and he also understands the district point of view. But he's trying to make sure that he has a transportation company that's there and ready should we decide to go back. And that was a concern across the state, you know, transportation companies folding up and not being able to sustain. And so it, I don't think, I don't think there really is a great decision right now to be made.
Are there any other questions or comments from the committee about this?
Mr. Adamopoulos, I was waiting for you.
You answered the two questions I had, so thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. All right. So next item is a before and after-school program. I've been working my way through our revolving accounts and making sure I'm checking balances. My next account will be food service and get, giving an update on that. So the before and after-school is a four-fee program that runs out of Park Avenue. It is an after-school and before-school daycare program that benefits our families in Webster. Since COVID hit, that program was closed up last year. We have always, over the past few years, been very successful with that program and have been running a profit in there. Last year, we ended the year with a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars in that revolving fund. And at that time, we were looking at paying a point-five custodian out of that program. Because they do service the program, that program can have forty, fifty kids running through there in a day easily. And there's cleaning involved, there's maintaining, there's setup, there's a lot going on with that program. So it is certain, it was certainly justifiable pulling that custodial, half of that point-five custodian out of that program. Due to COVID in this year, we started in remote, so we were not running a program. And we just started that program up as we returned to hybrid. The enrollment is way down in that program right now. As you can see, in the morning session, we only had about eight kids in the morning that we had going and then in the afternoon, we had thirteen. There's still some room for enrollment and they are still looking for students and putting another round of advertisement out there to see if there's a need to help families. I want to give the program some time to run to see if we gain any more momentum in there. Currently, right now, i- if you see, if we stay on path to where we are, we stand to loot, run about a twenty-three thousand dollar deficit if we were to continue running with the numbers that we have right now throughout the end of the year. My recommendation would be at this point, I would like to pull that custodian and only potentially pay a point-one out of there and put the remaining in the LEA budget. We do have salary savings there and that budget is in good shape. That'll help offset some of that deficit in that program. And we'll continue monitoring to see how that program runs. But I am recommendate, recommending and asking school committee permission to move point-four of that custodian back into the LEA budget to help offset some of that deficit in the before and after. I don't think we need to stop the program right now. I think what, you know, we certainly are managing and we have the surplus revenues there. But I think we need to watch it and I think we need to pay attention, close attention to where we're going. If we see those numbers dropping or if we shut down, then we're going to have to, you know, reevaluate. Definitely.
Thank you, Mrs. Prangely. Are there any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve moving point-four of the custodian from the before and after-school program budget to the LEA budget.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you pull the committee, please?
Member White?
Yes.
Member Naparata? I'm sorry, did you? Member Mallett?
Yeah.
Member Adamopoulos?
Actually, just have one quick question. On the, the notes, it looks like you want to move it from a point-five to a point-two. So is it a point-three reduction or a point-four reduction?
Sorry, it's a point-four. It should be a point-four.
Okay, yes.
Then Chairman Sodiki.
Yes, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you for picking that up. Okay, next item is the budget calendar, FY twenty-two. So we're shifting gears into next year. We've already started having discussions in our office about FY twenty-two. It is a little shorter timeframe this year. Typically, we are working on this. We start in October, I think it is, October, early November that we're working on this. We've been a little preoccupied with COVID and just not even knowing what our FY twenty-one status was and working into FY twenty-two has been a little daunting. But we're there now and we're in the mode and if you can see the schedule in front of you, it's, it's a little more condensed than it has been in the past, but no doubt we, we will get it done and I'm confident that we will go through it in great detail. Pretty much the schedule is going to stay as it is. We typically bring it to school committee with the first rough draft in January twelfth for them to have time to digest and ask questions. Usually the governor comes out with something in January, more detailed numbers. Not anticipating that this year again, but we'll hope, right? And then we come back to the school committee on January twenty-sixth if there's been any recommended change, changes. And then again, on February ninth, as we work through it, we typically send our budget to the town administrator for the end of February. We go to a finance committee meeting and a school committee meeting. I mean, board of selectmen meeting. And then we have some follow-up meetings as things change with the school committee. We typically have a joint board meeting in the spring with all three, with the finance, school committee and selectmen. And then we have our public hearing in April and our town meeting in May. So really, the only difference this year is that on a school level, we're just kind of consolidating our timeline. We are working like we are back in school a hundred percent and planning that way. And I'm going to believe that we're going to be back in school a hundred percent. And everything's going to be normal and we're going to be looking back at this and laughing and joking about it and saying, remember those meetings? But we will get there and we are proceeding. So I don't know if anybody has any thoughts about the budget calendar, but I just wanted to let you know where Ari, we've already started the process and we're working through it.
Mrs. Prangely, just one funny thing I noticed is that you have some ten-thirty PM meetings on there. I'm sure you mean AM.
Oh, yeah. I don't know lately, it could be ten-thirty PM.
It could be.
It could be. We've had a couple.
I'm sure you have. I'm sure you have. But they're probably not set out this far in advance, are they?
No, thank you. Good catch. All right. And that concludes my report. Thank you so much for your time. I know it was a little boring for you guys.
Very informative. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is the principal report. Joining us this evening is Fran Thomas from Bartlett High School. Good evening, Mr. Thomas.
Good evening, Chair Sodiki. How are you?
I'm well. How are you?
All right. I've, I've already spoken at length this evening, so I'll, I'll try to be brief. First thing I want to talk about, and Dr. Gogan had alluded to this earlier, the shift in cohorts. So just to, to give you an idea, at Bartlett High, on November thirteenth, we had a hundred and two students were scheduled to attend in-person in the hybrid model, starting this week. That was down to seventy-five students. Cohort B was scheduled to have a hundred and six students. That, that's down now to seventy-two. Cohort C has increased by two from thirty-one to thirty-three. And cohort D, those students going all remote, on thirteenth, it was a hundred and forty-seven. That is now up to two hundred and four. So what we're doing now is taking a review of the students' grades and starting with those students who were previously identified in cohort C as being high-risk. Any of those students who are failing multiple grades, we're going to reach out to them again and let them know they have a right to be in school four days row to see if that would help them. Once we finish that process, our, our next highest priority are those seniors who may be failing and we have a number of seniors because of their credit-earning history. We need to pass every class this year to graduate on time. So if those students in those situations are failing, we're going to look and see if we can invite them back in to see if that, we can give them a boost so that they can graduate on time. And even though the numbers have decreased by that much, it's not as simple as saying, well, we can add another thirty kids or another twenty-five kids. We have the distancing in the classrooms to take into consideration. So student A may fit in four or five of their regular classes, but not the other two. And then there's also the busing factor that, that we have to coordinate with Monique. So it's a, a, a multi-step process and guidance counselors have begun that already by reaching out to the students who are in these situations and hopefully we're going to be able to pull a few more back in. We have had some success with some students who were on the brink of getting into real trouble in, in terms of attendance and we managed to pull a few of them back in. So hopefully we'll have some similar success here. Any questions on those numbers or our efforts and what we're trying to do?
Mr. Thomas, it's really encouraging to hear that you're taking a proactive approach to looking at who, you know, may benefit from more time in the, in the school building and that type of thing and all the outreach that you're doing for attendance and all that kind of thing. So I know that's, that's something that anytime you don't have a, we as a society don't have a traditional school year and a traditional model, it's worrisome. So it's nice to hear that all of those efforts are going into, into place. So thank you for sharing them.
Yeah, it, it's interesting, the, the students who are here in, in hybrid, any number of them will come up unprovoked during the day and say, can I come to school all four days? And it's, it's a, it's a difficult situation to explain to them why I can't just say yes when they look around the cafeteria and see, you know, it half-empty or, you know, they go into a, a classroom and there's only three kids in class or whatever. So it's difficult to explain that, that process. And some of the students who are doing remote are doing extremely well. Some of the other kids who are in person. So it, it's not a one-size-fits-all, but we're, we're trying to make use of the space that we have now as best we can. The second thing that I want to talk to you about again is the innovation pathways. I spoke to you last time and said we had completed part A of the designation application. And we want to report that we have been invited to submit part B, the application. Not everyone who does part A gets that invite to finish part B. That's due in, in February. It will require a little bit more coordination with our industry partners. It's a lot of the same information that's required, but what they do in part A is kind of tell you where you need to beef it up or, you know, it, it was kind of like a partial thing of where you are in the process and they give you feedback and say, well, this is what we think. We need more information on it for it to be a successful application. But once we get the official designation, that then opens it up to a lot more opportunities, the Capital Skills Grant, Perkins Grant, those sorts of things. So it's an important step. Lot more work to be done, but it's encouraging to note that we were selected to be in this next phase. All right. Any questions on that? All right, moving on. The last thing that I wanted to talk about was a pilot program that, that kind of originated out of the innovation pathways. Early discussions with our Blackstone Valley Educational Foundation, was able to make some connections among people there. And I was approached about starting a pilot program involving both Dell computers and WPI. And basically, they are looking for twenty to thirty of our sophomores and juniors who are interested in pursuing STEM in college. And what they're going to do is they're going to take a virtual tour of the Dell headquarters and they're going to be paired up into groups and be presented with some problems that Dell has actually encountered or is, is encountering right now. And they're going to work as teams and in these breakout rooms and things like that, actual Dell engineers are going to be stopping in, kind of not evaluating, but asking questions, trying to figure out how they arrived at their conclusions. And then the groups are going to come back and present their solutions to each other and into a larger audience in Dell. And then they're going to follow up with WPI. So basically, this is a big recruiting tool for both WPI and Dell who are looking to diversify their student enrollment and their employees. So one of the reasons that Bartlett was chosen was because, as you know, our population is, tends to be a lot more diverse than some of the other Swickles schools. So they are looking for a more diverse population and that's by, not just by ethnicity, but by gender, by socioeconomic status, that they want to expand their, to both their student enrollment and, like I said, future employees. So some kids that Dell thinks is, are, are shock cookies, they're going to have their eye on them and the same thing with WPI. So it's a great opportunity. And again, some people may think of Dell, well, they make computers. But if you're talking about sophomores and juniors, it's going to be what Dell's going to be doing five and six years from now, not necessarily what they're doing right now. And some of the problems that they're encountering in some of the areas that they're going to branch off into. So guidance counselors and our department heads in math and science have been reaching out to students and identifying those who might have that interest. And this is going to, the first part of this is going to take place mid-January and the follow-up is going to be sometime in February. So it's, I'm very excited to have this opportunity. You know, I think it's one of those things where again, people recognize that Bartlett High's diversity can be a strength. And I, I'm sure there will be similar opportunities that will, will come across. These are some of the, the byproducts of being involved in the community that's seeking innovation pathways designation. So we're on track for, for two pathways and then we have this coming up and there, there's no limit to the number of pathways that you ultimately can apply for. So as we head into the building renovations, there, there may be a life sciences opportunity. The economic blueprint for the greater Wester area. The economic blueprint for the greater Worcester area shows that there's a lot of high-demand labor positions that they're looking to fill. So I think that's part of our mission and part of the building renovation. But I think this is a really good, unique opportunity, and I hope our kids are gonna take advantage of it. If there are any questions on that, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, that concludes my report for this evening.
Mr. Thomas, are there any questions or comments from the committee? Well, once again, Mr. Thomas, the depth and breadth of options that you have available to the students at Bartlett is growing by leaps and bounds. I'm really excited to see where this Innovative Pathways project takes us. And this Dell program sounds really exciting. So thank you for all the efforts from you and the team to bring these opportunities to our students.
Thank you.
If there are no other questions or comments from Mr. Thomas, the next item on our agenda is an update from our student representative. Good evening, Vivian.
Good evening. I have a pretty short report tonight. So for athletics, as we were talking about earlier, the winter season is still awaiting approval. For academics, I think the general consensus among students is that in-person learning has really helped to increase their focus. And the students who are in the classroom are really enjoying being back. For extracurriculars, National Honor Society is going to be posting their video tomorrow, December 9th, for their virtual induction ceremony for all the new members, and they put a lot of work into that, so it's going to be really cool. Bartlett started implementing the Positive Behavior Intervention System to encourage social distancing, which is giving the students like raffle tickets when they see them practicing social distancing. And then there's gonna be a drawing, so they'll have a chance to win prizes if they're practicing social distancing. Really cool idea. And faculty and staff have been doing a great job with the hybrid model, administrators and committee members too. All the students really appreciate everything that you guys are doing and are thankful to have such a hard-working team supporting us. Some teachers have been checking in on the students and sending like one-on-one emails and just making sure that we're doing okay. And it's been a very stressful semester for all of us. So I just wanted to say thank you and that all of that does not go unnoticed, and we really appreciate it. And that's going to conclude my report tonight.
Thank you, Vivian. And you know, in the words of a very wise person in Webster, kindness matters. So thank you for sharing your kindness and your kind words for the folks that are bringing their all every day to help you and your fellow students have the best experience possible this year. Does anyone have any questions for Vivian? Thank you for your update. We have no items tonight under old business. So the next item on our agenda under new business is the acceptance of a donation from Saints Constantine and Helen Church. It's Thanksgiving turkeys.
I had previously shared this with you at the last meeting. This is in front of you tonight to officially thank the Greek Church once again for their donations that went to Park Avenue and to Webster Middle School. Our families greatly appreciate the gift baskets and the gift cards.
Thank you, Dr. Gogan. So do I have a motion to accept the generous donation from the Saints Constantine and Helen Church?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? I haven't asked that yet tonight. Lori, would you poll the committee, please?
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Naprata? Member Mallett?
Yes.
Member Atomopoulos?
Yes.
And Chair Sadiki.
Yes, motion passes unanimously. And I would like to extend my thanks to Saints Constantine and Helen Church. I think I said it last time as well, but they're always here for us, and their generosity is much appreciated. The next item on the agenda is the approval of a job description. Adult Education: Daytime Instructional Technologist Specialist, Data Specialist. That's a mouthful. Who will be talking with us about, I see Ms. Baker is here. Who's going to talk to us about this? Dr. Gogan?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. We had a number of job positions, part-time positions, that were available that were not finding qualified candidates for. So we decided to reorganize some of the smaller positions into one position. We have always had site technologists for our evening program. We're happy to have teachers during the day that are very technologically skilled, and we haven't needed the tech support for them during the day, but we feel we should teach, treat our staff equitably. So this person will be responsible for helping to manage some of the intakes, to support the teachers during the day, and to do some of our data entry in our statewide database.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Mrs. Perengeli, how are we funding this position?
And this is grant-funded. It comes out of the Adult Education Program.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments?
Sure.
From the committee? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the job description as presented.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you poll the committee, please?
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Naprata? I'm sorry, I didn't?
Yes.
Member Mallett?
Yes.
Member Atomopoulos?
Yes.
And Chair Sadiki.
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. And the next item on the agenda is a review, transfer signing of warrants, bills, payroll, and vouchers. We do have a warrant in our packet this evening. Are there any questions from Mrs. Perengeli? Go on once. Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Through the chair.
Yes, Ms. Mallett?
I think we should acknowledge the letter we received from teachers with their concerns.
Thank you. You are, you are right. And I would not, having it not be on the agenda, I would not have acknowledged that without you bringing that up. Thank you very much. We cannot adjourn yet. Mrs. Jeffers, are you here tonight? Saw you earlier.
I am, but I am, it is not coming from, it is coming from individual teachers, so I would like them to speak.
Oh, okay. Is there a teacher who penned the letter here this evening?
I believe Mrs. Cole is here. And I think she sent one.
Mrs. Cole, are you here?
One.
I apologize.
Nope, that's fine.
I'm sorry that I almost adjourned without hearing from you. Thank you, Mrs. Mallett, for stopping that from happening. Mrs. Cole, would you like to read your letter, please, for the committee?
I don't have a copy of it here, but I'm sure that you do. It would be on my computer, which I'm on my phone right now. Overall, I think the teachers, and I am one of them, I have children in the school district, and I'm a teacher in the school district, so I can see it from both sides. And I feel that our safety concerns are really just not being addressed. There are a lot of issues within the schools. And in my letter, I did go over all of that. There are just certain things that are not safe. Having the children unmasked in our rooms for the amount of time daily that is required is not scientifically sound to keep the children and the staff safe. And I think we're seeing that in the outbreaks that are starting to happen. And I think it's going to get worse with the longer we're inside and with the vacations and people seeing family members. And I think we are doing a big disservice to our entire community by just brushing it under the rug and not talking about it and not really looking at it. We all want the kids in school. I love my job. I don't do it because I have to. I do it because I love it. But this is, it's not worth having children in school at all cost. And I think that that's the road we're going down right now. And I'm really not exactly sure why that is. We love the kids. We want them there. It's exciting to build relationships with them. But there are a lot of staff and a lot of students that are getting sick right now. And it's, it's just going to get worse. And I think that that is disturbing, that it's not being really looked at.
Thank you, Mrs. Cole. I didn't mean to put you on the spot there either. Would you like me to read this letter so that it can be heard by all those who are present this evening?
I think that would be lovely. Thank you.
Happy to. It's dated December 5th, 2020. Dear School Committee Members for the Town of Webster, I am writing with a request that you reevaluate the decision to hold in-person learning for the students of the Webster Public Schools and consider moving back a phase to remote learning to ensure the safety of students, staff, and the community as a whole. Robert Redfield, the head of the CDC, recently warned the public that the next three months will be, quote, "the most difficult time in the public health history of this nation," end quote. There are currently 280,000 American deaths due to the coronavirus. The death toll is expected, is predicted, excuse me, to reach 450,000 deaths by the end of January. In an October report of the World Health Organization, reiterated that transmission rates in schools are reflective of the transmission rates in the larger community. There's included a link that animates the town-by-town increases over time using the state's original risk metrics. And then the letter continues, "This visual easily drives home the fact that community transmission is too high in almost all of the Commonwealth. The CDC is now recommending universal masking use indoors anytime you are outside of your own living space. The CDC is stressing that, quote, 'consistent and correct use of masks is critical to curbing the spread of the virus, especially since 50% of the spread is believed to be from asymptomatic individuals.' Our daily student and staff health surveys are important, but not enough. Children do not get and transmit, excuse me, children get and transmit the coronavirus. Their likeliness to be asymptomatic makes for skewed data collection, but absence of evidence is not evidence of absence. Yes, we are requiring staff and students to wear masks, but this is also falling short of where it needs to be. Students at Park Ave Elementary are in classrooms without masks for breakfast, lunch, snack, and mask breaks. Additionally, teachers are spending a good portion of every day trying to correct for improper or lack of mask-wearing. This comes out to be an average of probably two hours out of a six-and-a-half-hour school day where students are maskless and in the classroom. Here is a great tool that a team at MIT developed to assess the safety of different environments over time." And there's another link included. Using this app, the average classroom at PAE, where students are wearing cloth masks with fidelity 75% of the time, remaining seated and talking quietly, the room becomes unsafe for 10 people after two hours. If the occupancy is reduced to five, it is now only, it is now still only safe for four hours. This is simply not good enough. Superintendent Gogan has done an excellent job being transparent and reporting the known cases here in our community. But I just want to remind everyone that these cases are only the tip of the iceberg. I want to restate that 50% of transmission is attributed to asymptomatic individuals. Cases nationwide, statewide, and locally have been continually increasing with no sign of slowing down. It is time to be proactive in safeguarding the health of our community. As I am writing this, my own aunt, uncle, and cousins have currently tested positive. My grandparents have been exposed to them, and my family is terrified they will start to show symptoms. This virus is affecting all of us in ways we never imagined. We carry around the weight and worry of the virus in every single thing we do. At the October 27th meeting of the Webster School Committee, I remember a community member callously saying, quote, "You aren't all going to die. I promise," end quote. That phrase has been echoing back to me for weeks. No, of course, we aren't all going to die, but many people have and many more will. If we can minimize that, shouldn't we? Again, I am writing with the request that you reevaluate the decision to hold in-person learning for the students of the Webster Public Schools and consider moving back a phase to remote learning to ensure the safety of students, staff, and the community as a whole, as coronavirus cases continue to increase exponentially. So this particular letter was not the exact letter that Mrs. Cole submitted. So I apologize. It was the first one that I could pull up quickly on the fly here this evening. But this was written by Amanda Anderson, a first-grade teacher at Park Ave Elementary School. Mrs. Cole, your letter was very similar, am I right?
Yes, it was just, we all changed out the personalized paragraph.
Sure.
Yep, so that was the only difference. And I would like to add too, since I'm on here and you just asked that, just within the last two days, I think this is also important to note. I have had three colleagues that I am friendly with, just on a personal level, let me know that they have either recently tested positive or have now symptoms. And those are just people that I talk to because I'm personally friends with them. I certainly don't even know the majority of the teachers in our district and the staff in our district. So it's really just starting to hit everywhere. And I just think that's worth noting and talking about. So thank you very much for the time.
You're welcome. And thank you for sharing your thoughts with us this evening.
I'm Chair.
I'll open it.
Hey, I just want to note that Webster has moved from red to yellow.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Could you please state your name for the minutes?
Corey Hinkle.
Okay.
We've moved from red to yellow, so I find it concerning that we're still all, you know.
They changed the metrics, that's why.
So I'm going to interject here and state that this is not a period for public comment. While I do appreciate community members joining this meeting this evening, this is not an opportunity for folks to jump in on a business meeting. So I do appreciate everyone's interest and involvement here. I will open it up, however, to members of the committee for comments or questions regarding this letter that was submitted by not just Mrs. Cole, other teachers as well.
When will the parents have that opportunity, sorry? Because, you know, it's frustrating to hear opposite things that we're hearing from our own government, so it's hard to not say anything.
Okay, I'm gonna stop you there, Eric. Once again, your question, it sounds like, was when will parents have an opportunity to comment? And I can certainly, Dr. Gogan and I can certainly talk about arranging a public, right, Dr. Gogan? Some type of a, another situation, but during a business meeting would not be the time for us to be able to have, have this type of exchange going on. Does that sound okay?
If I may just interject, Mrs. Cole, Mrs. Anderson, and I think another teacher had also written a letter. What I attempted to do at the beginning of the meeting was to stress the stress that we're feeling in our schools from an educator's perspective. We certainly understand that parents and some community members and school committee members, everyone is entitled to their opinion. And everyone sees this differently. I will just kindly remind us that running this organization is under my leadership. And there is nothing more serious that I take than safety. And we are continuing to assess the data. And at any point, as I stated at the very beginning, things could shift. And the decision to move to a remote learning will happen from the superintendent with the Board of Health, with the Department of Education, and informing the school committee. At this current time, and this is for the teachers out there, I do want you to know that we have been looking very carefully at our data. And the, there have been meetings. Today is only Tuesday, and there've been a number of meetings to look at what is the threshold. It is, there is no set threshold. Every case is different. And safety will continue to be our guiding light. So, you know, as opposed to getting into a dialogue about everyone's different opinions, I will try to stress one thing. Every day, parents have a decision that they can make. They have the right to send their children to school, to hybrid. Our educators, some of our educators, some more than others, are living in fear. They do not have that ability to make that decision. And I just want to point out that we have to be respectful. And I just want to point out that we have to be respectful of everyone's opinions. And we don't want to talk in circles, um, but I will try to reassure the entire Webster School community. All of this is talked about every single day. And at any point, there could be a shift to remote learning based on the numbers and the situation. You have seen it at Webster Middle School, we have had to call three remote days to date due to staffing shortages. Safety and maintaining safety in our classroom will continue to be the guiding light. I hope that helps.
Thank you, Dr. Gogan. Are there any other questions or comments from the committee?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Mallett.
I would just, uh, like to say, I, Superintendent Gogan, I think, said it very well. And in that. Are, we want to have our children in school. Our staff does not have a say whether they can be remote or not. And we do take it very, very seriously. And, um, the superintendent and her COVID team. Work daily, hourly, by the minute, on this, keeping everybody safe. And it's not just about numbers, it's about safety. It's about life and death. And we take it very seriously. For all our community. And I thank the superintendent for, her daily hard work on this. It's, uh, very tough decisions to be made.
Agreed, thank you, Mrs. Mallett. So, um, if there are another, if there are no other questions or comments from the committee, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
There is a motion and a second, uh, Lori, would you please pull the committee?
Member Bligh.
Yes.
Member Naprata.
Yes.
Member Mallett.
Yes.
Member Adamopolis.
Yes.
And Chair Tadiki.
Yes, meeting adjourned.
Happy holidays to everybody.
Thank you, you too.
I wish you well.